Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for May 16, 2013. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll begin tonight with two proclamations. The first for an Eagle Scout for Jonathan Trudell. Whereas Jonathan Trudell has been a member in good standing of Troop 32, Boy Scouts of America, and received his Eagle Scout rank on May 24, 2012, and whereas Jonathan Trudell has served his troop by displaying perseverance, strong morale, character, and commitment to community service, and whereas the Eagle Scout Award will be presented to Jonathan Trudell at an Eagle Court of Honor to be held on May 26, 2013, at the Blessed Sacrament School Auditorium, and whereas Jonathan Trudell has made exemplary contributions to his community through his Eagle Scout Service Project by organizing and making a two-sided sign promoting the monthly food collection at St. Mary's to benefit the Pine Street Inn and Walpole Food Pantry, which has improved the collection by the community, whereas the highest ideals of the Boy Scouts of America have been upheld by Jonathan Trudell and by the significant achievements he has brought great honor to his troop and to the Town of Walpole. Now therefore, we, the Walpole Board of Selectmen, congratulate Jonathan for his solid and continuous record of accomplishment and contribution to the service of the Town of Walpole, and in particular, commend him for his attainment of the highest Boy Scout honor, Eagle Scout. The Board further extends to him its best wishes for continued happiness and success. The Walpole Board of Selectmen. Congratulations, Jonathan.
I move to approve.
Another second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four, zero, zero. Second proclamation is to make people aware that May is Building Safety Month. Whereas our community and state's continuing efforts to address the critical issues of safety, energy efficiency, and resilience in the built environment that offers our citizens both in everyday life and in times of natural disaster, gives us confidence that our structures are safe and sound, and whereas our confidence is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, laborers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings, and whereas these guardians, dedicated members of the International Code Council, use a governmental consensus process that brings together local, state, and federal officials with expertise in the built environment to create and implement the highest-quality codes to protect Americans in the buildings where we live, learn, work, worship, play. And whereas the international codes, the most widely adopted building safety, energy, and fire prevention codes in the nation are used by most U.S. cities, countries, and states, these modern building codes also include safeguards to protect the public from natural disasters such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildland fires, and earthquakes. And whereas Building Safety Month code of officials keep you safe, the theme of Building Safety Month 2013 encourages all Americans to raise awareness of the importance of building safety, green and resilient building, pool, spa, and hot tub safety, backyard safety, and new technologies in the construction industry. Building Safety Month 2013 encourages appropriate steps everyone can take to ensure that places where we live, learn, work, worship, and play are safe and sustainable, and recognizes that countless lives have been saved due to the implementation of safety codes by local and state agencies, and whereas each year in observance of Building Safety Month, Americans are asked to consider projects to improve building safety and sustainability at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now therefore, we, the Board of Selectmen, Town of Walpole, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2013 as Building Safety Month. Accordingly, I encourage our citizens to join with their communities in participation in Building Safety Month activities. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Thank you for that rousing rendition.
All in favor?
Aye.
I was actually thinking of getting some music going in the background while we were reading it.
Four, zero, zero. Mr. Boynton, maybe you should have remembered it was Building Safety Month before you did that to me.
I know. Not that you read it slowly, but certain five-quarter Patriots games are finished quicker than that, but...
That was very funny. Okay. With that as backdrop, we will go to our first agenda item this evening, and that is the McGuire Group update on the municipal facilities. Mr. Boynton, would you like to give us some opening comments?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, the members of the Board, thank you. Fab and Dan are here to present to you what we believe to be the final phase of their study in the Town of Walpole for the Municipal Facilities Plan. I think they will go through and talk a little bit about what's happened over the last several months since they first presented to you the recommendation, and at that time, the Board has obviously opportunities for questions to Dan and Fab and to decide on the next steps. It would not be unexpected for the Board to, at this point, regard the plan as final, so to speak, move into additional phases of potential study as well as community outreach. But from the context of what these fellows were and their company was required to do per the terms of the RFP in the contract, they have actually met that with tonight's presentation. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I turn it over to Fab.
Fab, please, and welcome again.
Thanks, Michael. Thank you for having us. Basically, like Mr. Boynton said, we're here just to update you on what has transpired the last three or four months. Since our last meeting, we had, sorry. Since last meeting, we had a Board of Selectmen's workshop. We've had a, Dan has met with the school committee, reviewed our findings. We met, we had a Spirited Water and Sewer Commission meeting as well. We had a meeting with the Walpole business leaders. A lot of things were discussed. A lot of things have been implemented into the report. However, we want to bring three things that, present three items that we want to further discuss. One is the Washington Street site, the environmental issues out there, the well radius, the overlay district, which is an Area 1, as well as wetlands. We'll go have a slide that addresses all these. As far as the public safety facility, we looked at the town center for a combined facility, and then we looked at potential for leasing the commercial space for a senior center. Obviously, our research has found or summed the fact that the cost of a tenant upgrades to a leased space, combined with the cost of a long-term lease, which typically a lease is only five years, then you have to either renew or look at additional space. Looking at the available spaces to accommodate a 15,000-square-foot senior center with the sufficient parking, dedicated parking, because it's going to be close by to the entrance and not scattered throughout our parking through a mall, we identified that this is really not a feasible option. Some simple math, we worked out the cost of tenant upgrades for 15,000-square-foot facility, bare bones, $50 a square foot, just that by itself is about $3.25 million. The cost for a long-term lease, assuming a $12-a-square-foot lease, which is bare bones, for 15,000 square feet, you're looking at approximately $180,000, times, say, 20 years, that's close to $3.5 million. That's, if you can get a 20-year lease, like I said, most of them are only five-year leases, and after a five-year lease, you can either break the lease, sorry, either re-sign a new lease for a period of time or look for new space, in which case, you have to do a cost of tenant upgrades again in another facility. So we've actually looked at this, and this is not a viable alternative for a senior center. So we actually did not proceed any past that point. Regarding the public safety facility on the town center, we've looked at this orientation on this building, and there's numerous ways of addressing or trying to fit this building on this site. The most important part of it is to provide a new police station. Rehab the existing building for our fire headquarters, as we previously mentioned, add an apparatus base for the fire headquarters and living spaces above it, and provide a police station to the rear of it. The problems or the issues with this scenario is the fact that there's fewer staff parking spaces. We lose out, I forgot, Dan, how many, I believe 25 spaces fewer than what we should have. We also have, we don't have a dedicated impound yard or dedicated area for the police officers. More importantly, we have a loss of municipal parking spaces, some of which is not town-owned. There's police and fire vehicle circulation issues around the site. Construction phasing is a premium, because basically now, not only interrupting one department at a time, you're disrupting two operating facilities at the same time, as well as trying to find relocation areas during construction for them to operate out of. So again, while we can design something on this site, the cost and the actual feasibility is really not recommended. We looked at previous reports that identified the town center for police and fire, and basically, when you look at the stone field option, it's been identified as having unsuitable soils, and while you can, there's remediation, there's addressing these with medium-deep piles, the cost is obviously greater than standard foundations. More importantly, the safety issues, you're going to be having apparatuses and ambulances exiting on a, basically, a parking lot. That's really an accident waiting to happen, and I mean that accident is really, you know, minimizing the impact, because you have people trying to find a parking space for the retail, and you have these large vehicles, large apparatuses trying to exit to respond to an event. Also, there's the issue of loss of a field. If you look at the municipal lot option, we have the same issues with the safety issues. We have loss of parking spaces, there's loss of the field, because basically, the building and the parking cannot accommodate on that just, that one site, it will impact the field as well. And all the adjacent properties around the area there, they all have loading docks in the back, there's vehicle circulation that also gets impacted. So you're impacting all those businesses. So I mean, we really don't recommend the stone field option or the municipal lot option as viable options with, going back one, with this scenario, you can possibly find additional parking if you get rid of the field, but you still have police and fire site circulation issues and insufficient parking for either. Excuse me. On the Washington Street site, since our last meeting, we've had wetlands delineation on the site. There has been, there are two areas with wetlands identified. One is along the driveway to the DPW site, which is the top portion there, and one is probably in the center of the parcel we're looking at, and these are identified as blue on the site plan. Also identified the well radius, which is the red portion on the upper right-hand corner. Basically, the buildings would not be impacting the well radius. We are in an Area 1, and we actually renovated, sorry, we've reconfigured the buildings to miss the wetlands as well as the well radius. You can see that we are outside the 100-foot buffer with the green. Based on our findings, we are in overlay district Area 1. Special permit is required, however, it does not preclude from buildings being built on this site. I know that the people from the Water and Sewer were very adamant that it can't be done, but, you know, based on our history, it can be done, and to, you know, since it's a big issue, we recommend that independent study of impact for the water supply be performed. Excuse me. With that, I think that's, that's pretty much it. I'll leave it up, open up the questions.
Terrific. Nancy?
I just want to comment, great job, and that you guys have done a really outstanding job of reaching out and meeting with the different groups, whether it's a town group, a private group, a business group, a school group, to really gather a lot of information to put this together. I didn't want to correct, Michael, but there is still a town meeting that will, that your group will be presenting to based on the RFP, but I guess I will.
I've been used to that.
And then I did, you know, want to mention that we did, you know, send a letter to Water and Sewer to meet with them so that we can discuss as a board going forward with your recommendation of independent study, because, you know, it's very important, and we would like to do that with the Water and Sewer Board, so you think that's very important for the town.
I can question, if you mind.
Hold on. What, hold your, Mark?
I just want to say, and you've heard me say this before, I thought you've done a good job of looking back at prior studies, gathering new information, presenting some new ideas. I think you've done a good job pulling it all together. So I'm happy, I think the town is ready to accept the study. I would say, what I've said before to different groups in here, is I think Walpole always likes to Walpolize anything that we do, and I think we're ready to move into the phase of accepting the study and WalPolarizing it in whatever way we decide is best. And I think you've left us in a good position with a good study, a lot of good information that we can digest and make some plans and move forward, so I would say thank you for all your work.
Just a couple of questions. Are you aware of any leased senior centers in any other cities or towns in Massachusetts?
No, I'm not.
My other question is, in looking at the site maps that are up there, there's an existing DPW facility that would be at the top of that upper map, right? Are the buildings that, in the locations that you're proposing them, any closer to the well radius than the existing DPW?
Actually, they're closer.
How much closer?
I'm not sure, but I know that the existing, there's a warehouse where, there's two buildings, there's an old salt shed, and there's a storage facility, they're closer to the radius than our buildings are. And actually, as part of this process, we're looking at improving the environmental aspect of the existing buildings. Currently, those buildings don't have any sand, don't have any separators, so it's part of this project, we're actually improving...
Talking about the DPW?
The DPW, correct.
Yeah.
So we're improving the environmental aspect of those facilities as part of this project.
And, yeah, I mean, it would be interesting to see how you had them, I don't remember the exact configuration before, how much did you change them in order to come up with the sightings so that you avoid those buffers?
Before, they were facing each other. Now, we actually have them perpendicular to each other, so there's a little green space between the two buildings.
Okay.
It's still that same type of campus atmosphere, just that the buildings no longer are facing each other, they're perpendicular to each other.
And as I recall, was this, it was like shared parking?
Yes.
Before, but that, that's not possible?
It's, the shared parking is still available. Basically, the parking, the...
Oh, I see, yeah.
The building on the top right, that's the police station, it's got the vehicle, the parking behind the facility is for staff. Public parking will be shared with the senior center.
I see, that the parking essentially to the side closer to the senior center.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, that's cleverly done. Okay. Thank you.
Before we open it up to public, I too wanted to say thank you. It's a very difficult task, and you've presented the study findings, been open to suggestions, answered myriad questions, and a job well done, and we'll see how this sits with town meetings. So with that, let me open it up. Mr. Taylor, please come up to the microphone.
Okay, appreciate it. About the ball field, we can use, they can, we have plenty of ball fields. We can use the one up at Lincoln Road, ball field up there, the old landfill. Why ain't we using that for ball fields? We can use this field right here for a police station. We can even use that back parking lot for a police station, too. Just knock down the firehouse and bring it back a couple thousand feet, or whatever, and put two or three sections on upstairs of that, of the firehouse, and combine them downtown. It's going downtown, it's going to be downtown. That's the only place that, that is good for them. Washington Street is not a place for a police station, it's not. Combine station downtown, I would go for, and everybody else would go for.
All right. I...
In the field over here, you can use this field. If we do lose the field, we can use the landfill up at Lincoln Road, how come we're not using it? How many of these have been capped now, Michael? How many of these have been capped?
Two thousand...
And how come nothing has been done?
You want me to answer the first question? Would you like me to answer the first question?
Go ahead.
The Lincoln Road landfill was capped permanently in 2003 or '04. That's when it was finished. It was a repair of the 1977 cap. The Lincoln Road landfill was not set for field space. It also doesn't have any monitoring wells or any type of, there's no post-closure use plan that would be required by the Department of Environmental Protection. So simply standing here tonight saying it can be used doesn't make it such. It would have to be gone through an extensive process through the DEP, which would therein lie, cost the town, A, many thousands of dollars in terms of the study for DEP's purposes, and likely result in annual monitoring and costing on an ongoing basis.
Thank you. And I would say this, Jimmy, personally, I would love to have a public safety building downtown, where you and I completely disagree, and it's something that's, I'm very passionate about. I do not think this town has enough ball fields. As a matter of fact, I can give you countless examples of the need for a significant number of ball fields over what we have now, because the fields that we have now, A, in many times because of cost reductions, are unplayable or nearly unplayable, and B, we cannot, we don't have the luxury of even meeting the demands of the sports in this town with the current field footprint. So agree totally that, you know, personally, I would love to see something downtown, but not at the expense of taking something away from our kids.
Well, that's all I have to say, Eric. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Yes, please.
Name is Ken Fettick, and I'm on the Water and Sewer Commission. Unfortunately, I wasn't at the last meeting, the joint meeting. As you know, Walpole has a legacy of industrial development, and a very strong one in the late 19th century and early part of the 20th century. These four or five firms built the town, and they provided the funding for some of these buildings that we're about to replace. At one point, I think the industrial companies in the town paid over 30% of the overall tax burden of the town. Unfortunately, they were not good stewards of the environment, and I didn't fault them completely for that, because that was the tenor of the way people operated in those days, and the environment wasn't that important to them. We now have several building sites in the town that need cleanup. We have the Byrd Machine, Stone Street, others, and we are now presented with a proposal to replace the town buildings with other sites which are not contaminated but are very sensitive areas near our wetlands. In fact, they're in Zone 1 and 2 of the aquifer recharge area. The inevitable result is that our children and grandchildren will now be asked to replace those new buildings after the proposed locations become contaminated and our water supply endangered. There is no way you can tell me that by putting several cars into that area, parking on a regular basis with antifreeze and oil and gasoline, that some of that won't leak out and endanger our water supply. I was contacted by a gentleman on Washington Street, Mr. Lewis Davison, and he requested that I look into the site on Stone Street. Now, that wasn't even referred to tonight. He turned over to me a report that was written in 2004 about a visioning process which we went through in 2001, and the report was prepared by the Walpole Superfund Committee, and I'm ashamed to say I was a member of that committee, and nothing has been done about this report since 2004. The report listed alternatives for development of that site, and it produced a number of The report at that time showed that the owner of the property owed us in taxes and penalties over $1 million. So the McGuire report, which shows that we would have to buy that property, we can take that on a tax lien and at relatively no cost. If that was 2004 and they owed us $1 million, they at least owe us $2 million now. In addition, these people who own the property were renting it out and collecting rent and not paying their taxes to us. The town officials did nothing about this. It's ridiculous. The EPA has decided that the previous owners of the property will come up with $13 million to clean up the site. It is the best option for municipal buildings, and I don't know why we're avoiding it. It takes a little courage and work to free up that site, and the east side of the site is relatively clean. It doesn't require, as a matter of fact, somebody was manufacturing there within the last three years. So if they can occupy that site and operate a business, we can certainly put a fire station or a police station in there. We seem to be avoiding that site, and I'm not sure why. It's time to reconsider that site and save the problem of developing a site on a very sensitive area in the aquifer, and I would suggest that we reopen our consideration of that site. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Mr. Thompson?
Yeah. You can stand if you want. You're probably not aware of what has, what went on in order to try and obtain that property and to look into that, because I was personally involved in doing that, and I spent quite a bit of time, actually, on that, because I too agree that it's utterly ridiculous that this person who owns the property or company or whatever it is, is collecting rent, thumbing their nose at the town, not paying their taxes, and what do we do to do about it? So the issue that we face is if we take the property, the town can potentially end up having to pay for cleanup. If you're in the ownership chain, the authorities that are dealing with the cleanup don't really care. As long as you're an owner, you are potentially a responsible party. So there is a statute that allows you to essentially, I'm not going to use the right word here, because it's long enough ago, but essentially get a waiver from the Attorney General in order to acquire the property and not be subject to any liability. And we met with the Attorney General's Office, we went through quite a, quite a lot of roundabout discussion, letters, town council got involved, and the net result was that the AG essentially said they weren't going to give us the type of waiver that would make us feel comfortable.
I can answer that if you wish.
Well, let me just finish. So the net result, the net result was, we did look into it, we looked into it seriously, and we weren't able to put the town in a position where... And we weren't able to put the town in a position where we were able to acquire it or to go after this person without putting the town into a untenable position. I mean, I would feel personally terrible and responsible if we ended up taking that property and the town was responsible for tens of millions of dollars of cleanup. I can't put the town in that position. So...
My response to that is that there is a state program which allows a developer or a town to go into a property like that. And once they get the assessment of the contamination cleanup, they will offer insurance up to that level. So the state will ensure somebody taking over that property. And we could do that at a relatively low rate.
Michael?
Thank you. Ken, I... No.
Yes.
Well, no, I, this is a 30-year-old issue in the town of Walpole. The EPA, which is obviously driving the ship in this thing, has been working at this for that period of time. Specifically, the Record of Decision, which determined what the cleanup level was, which was approved by the feds in 2008, and then went through a litigation, I mean, a, yeah, it was a litigation process. It was a court process with the responsible parties. It was signed a couple of years later. Has now been ongoing for, the whole, the whole assessment work, et cetera, has been ongoing for the better part of 15 years. There was cleanup that was done in the 1990s. There's a capped landfill there on the westerly side. And you said that the easterly side is clean, and we could actually get in there for little to no cost. We have heard as recently as the last several days about, reminded about the challenges with respect to the easterly side of that property. Specifically, that one thing that the initial assessments did not do is they did not core through floors and tell us exactly what is underneath each one of the buildings on that site. The responsible parties maintain a lifetime responsibility for the easterly side, the westerly side, the downstream, the trail, the tail race, the entire shooting match, the groundwater maintenance, et cetera, on that property. They maintain that responsibility forever. Once the buildings on the easterly side are officially gone, and there is no obligation or no authority from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts or the federal government or the town of Walpole to force them to take those buildings down at their expense, once those buildings are gone, then all of the soils underneath those buildings, which have been utilized for manufacturing, where historic manufacturing of brake pads, et cetera, would then have to be tested. And anything that's quote-unquote "hot" underneath those buildings now becomes the responsibility of the responsible parties to clean up. Unless somebody steps into the ownership responsibility along the way. And what Chris spoke about was the federal process of a two-pronged approach of trying to get not only the federal government through the Department of Justice and the EPA, as well as the State Attorney General's Office, to issue dual covenants not to sue. The State Attorney General in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts refused to do that for the town of Walpole because a final cleanup plan had not been identified. And at that point, and to this day, although the Record of Decision has been entered and there's a federal judgment to that effect, the responsible parties continue to meet on a monthly basis to figure out how they want to go about cleaning this up. So I understand your point, but to simply say, "It's easy, do it," is not accurate, and it's not factual.
I would agree with you.
So if I can, and to the point that the Maguire Group actually spent time and has identified this as a potential site. It has not been disregarded.
It didn't come up tonight.
It's in the report.
I know it's in the report, but it didn't come up tonight.
Exactly. Because what they focused on were the primary spots. Correct me if I'm wrong, gentlemen, that, I mean, having eaten and slept this thing for the last several months. They've looked at sites that were identified and recommended by our consultants as primary sites. The concerns raised by the Sewer Water Commission last month with respect to the proposed site for police and fire are legitimate concerns. And what I believe this board did at its last meeting was ask that a letter be sent to the Sewer Water Commissioners to fully understand what can and cannot be done in that site. And not to simply do it based upon conjecture or based upon a feeling or based upon a fear. And I think at this point in time, although it wasn't part of the scope of services for the Maguire Group, that's what still is out there. A, it is possible to build a police station on the superfund site, easterly side. I don't think anyone is saying that's not possible. But based upon the fact that right now, if they were to approve, for example, the groundwater treatment building on that site tonight, the earliest that they would be able to start working on it is 2015. There is no plan in place or a final timetable as when all cleanup on that site will be completed. And in fact, it can't be put in place as a final cleanup until there is a final plan of where the buildings will go that are currently sitting on the site and what would be done. The town of Walpole would have to ensure, and in fact, the point that town officials have done nothing along the way, we actually went to the point of creating through town meeting an Economic Development Industrial Commission that has the ability to take that, to step into that responsibility between the town of Walpole and the responsible parties or the current owner, and to utilize their, uh, the, uh, to assess, to assign our tax title rights to the EDIC to potentially take that site. Once a plan is in place. It's a chicken and the egg issue. I was on a conference call with the EPA yesterday with Robin Chappelle on it. We have not, I don't think anyone has ruled that site out or taken it off the table. But there is a complete understanding and recognition on our part that we're talking years from being potentially available to us.
We're talking years from 2004 when this report was put together. And Mr. Davison would be down here presenting this, except that he's in his late 90s.
Thank you, Ken.
And he can't get out and around. I mean, he's waiting for some action on this. He showed me an article from the, the Adleboro Sun about the visioning process and, and I'll leave it with you if you wish. But this has been dragging on, and we haven't done enough to work on this.
Ken, in all due respect, that's your opinion. I think both Mr. Thompson and Mr. Boynton addressed your concerns. Ms. McKenzie?
Because it is such a concern, we did, as Michael mentioned, we had the Maguire Group go to an entire day of meetings to talk about the South Street site with the agencies that are involved this year in 2013. So that they got the up-to-date now information to make their assessment to decide whether or not, where it stood with all the other sites. And that's why it was eliminated because it is going to be too long.
Let her speak, Ken.
Because it's going to be too long, is not a potential site. It's going to be too long, it's going to cost us too much, and it's going to put us at risk. That's something that we don't want to happen. Where, as a town, we've put ourselves in, I think, a great spot by creating the EDIC so that when it's appropriate and we don't put the town or the people in town at risk, we are ready to jump in and take it, to be able to utilize it for something. But that's far away. Would we love it to be closer? Absolutely. I mean, there's, for years since 2000, since 99, people in this town have been going to forums and begging and pleading something to be done. But because we're not an owner and we're not willing to put the town people at risk financially, we don't get a say. So we have to wait it out, and that's where we are. And when it comes to these sites, when you look at these parking lots, I mean, I would think, you know, you'd remember, think about Stop &amp; Shop. When they took down Heartland Plaza and we put up the new Stop &amp; Shop, that parking lot there, the runoff could go straight into the river. But the way they can build now, the receptacles that are underneath that parking lot, separate and clean everything. So the water coming from that parking lot is cleaner than it's ever been, than it ever would be if it was just runoff from 1A. So the same thing would happen here. And the same thing that would then happen in the other phase that would go into the DPW site. I mean, look at the junkyard on 1A that has been sitting there for years and years, that's been going into our well water. I mean, this is a way to actually do some buildings. I mean, you mentioned that years from now, we'd be asking to take this down because we'd be contaminating a site. I don't see that when the engineering numbers prove that would actually be cleaning the water underneath. The receptacles that would be underneath these parking lots would be cleaning it. And those engineering numbers are true, and they've been true for the last, how many years? I mean, you can ask Maggie, the town engineer, who's sitting in the audience. She knows that all the sites, all the site plans that we've done that contain buildings and parking lots, even houses and neighborhoods, they're recharging, they're cleaning, they're doing such a better job. So buildings that we now replace, and then we take down older ones. I mean, this parking lot out here doesn't have that. They, they talk about the dirt that's here and how much it would cost us because there's fill in it. I mean, this is a chance to actually build on a site that hasn't been altered. The back has. And to make sure we're putting cleaner water into our wells.
May I respond?
Yes.
We, we get contamination levels, reports from various sites in town. And the contamination level of various things, various salts and compounds and so forth, are, have been expressed in parts per million. And now they're being expressed in parts per billion. And the ability to test is more and more difficult. And when we build this site, it'll come onto parts per billion. And the, the, the regulation will then switch to parts per trillion.
Right.
And we will probably be out of regulation.
Right.
I, I mean, why contaminate this site or take the chance of contaminating this site when we have places that we can build on? And to me, the Stone, the South Street site is ideal almost.
Thank you.
There are problems, no question about it. But you've got to fight through them, and we haven't done it. We, these reports were turned out in 2004. That's nine years ago. We haven't done that much since then. It's time for us to act on it.
Thank you very much, Ken. Bill?
Thank you. Is that on? Okay. I'll take your word for it. Area 1, which is what we're talking about, and Area 2 are the two only places in town where we can put or build new wells. That's it. We have no other places in town. Area 2 is delineated on the ground by sites. We can, we can have surveyors go in and tell us where Area 2 begins and ends. Area 1 is delineated by the well itself. It's not like the state. The state has three zones. We did four areas. We have the wells draw down. When the wells are in production, we delineate the Area 1. And this site is Area 1. So it's a very, very sensitive area. We've lost wells. We've lost several wells, and we've had to replace them, and thank God...
How many, Bill? How many wells have we lost?
We've lost about five.
Where were they?
Well, we lost 100 on Washington Street.
Where, where were they? All of them? When?
On Washington Street.
When?
Over the years.
What years?
I don't have the dates, but you can find them out from the Water and Sewer.
Can you get us the dates?
Oh, sure, we can look them up.
You'll provide them? I just, if you're going to, if you're going to tell us how many, I would like you to know how many, when.
We had to raise millions of dollars at town meeting.
When was that?
Over the years.
When?
You know, I can't give you a particular date.
Well, you have...
Does that mean that what I'm saying about Area 1 doesn't mean anything because I can't tell you the date?
I just want you to back up your comments.
We, we, we put a, a, a gas station in the DPW yard. Do you know where it is? Because it isn't there anymore. We had to remove it. Do you know why? Because we had to shut down our well because it leaked. There was, there was a spill there from the gas station. That was never supposed to happen. We had engineers tell us that it was going to be a perfect site and that we would never have a problem. We put the gas station in, and we had to tear it out.
Which engineers told us it would be okay?
Some consulting firm.
Which one?
I have no idea.
When was that?
So let me, let me just interject. Can you get to your point?
But there was a gas station here, you know.
Okay, so get, get to your point.
Okay.
Area 1, you don't think is feasible to build on?
Absolutely. We shouldn't use it. It, it, it should be sacrosanct. Because it is where we get our water flow. Now, the need, when you talk about building this site, and when I heard that they're talking about borings, drilling down to bedrock is drilling to refusal. The impact of the drill impacting bedrock causes fracturing, fracturing. We know fracking releases natural gas. It also, in our case, will release TCE, which we have that's dove down into the bedrock from when it was contaminated.
And you know that for sure?
Oh, yeah, that's why, we, we discussed plans for going in and maybe trying to do fracking to get rid of the TCEs. But it was too dangerous to do.
What source did you get that from? I'm just, that you're reading from?
Oh, this is from my memory.
Okay.
Okay.
But you don't remember when the wells went out?
Over the years, when we had the gas station, they closed it down. When we had this, when we had the TCE epidemic, we had to shut wells down, pump them to waste. There was a lot of tragedy in that, in that Area 1 at one time or another. And wells have failed just because of over-pumping. Now, some wells now, there's a, a plan to restore a well, to try to refurbish it. If that works, we're all set. What happens is, if you have a well and the surrounding strata collapses on the well, then the well can't be used. So then you have to either try to restore it or put another one in. And sometimes, and we've built a well, we've drilled a well into the ground that didn't produce. We had to move...
When was that?
Pardon?
When was that?
It was a while ago. Yeah. But in any case, you know, this is...
I mean, I appreciate your concern and the education process, but if you can get to your point, that would be helpful.
Right, I'm trying to, but I don't, I don't understand the value of dates. These are situations...
Because you're making, here's the value, right?
Right.
You have time to speak. You're bringing up points like we've had to get rid of hundreds of wells without backing that up. And I don't, what I don't want to do is create any misconceptions on a fact that you may have right or you may have wrong.
The 100 wells were shallow wells down in Washington.
But now, we're getting a little more deal. But my point is, if you don't think Area 1 is suitable, that, that's your opinion.
Right.
The second point is, is if you, you think drilling down is going to release TCEs.
It could.
That's great. They, they, no, you said it would, not that it could.
Yes.
Okay.
You know, that's, that's what happens.
When you're, when you're saying this, I just want to make sure it's 100% factual because people are listening, people are covering this, and I want to make sure that there's fact behind all of this.
Yes. When we had the, when we had the situation with the TCEs, that was one of the solutions. We knew, because we were told by the scientists, that the TCEs dive down into the bedrock. And one way to get rid of them is to go in and fracture the bedrock.
I'm fully aware of the process.
So if we, if we still have TCEs, we're still treating. So there's still TCEs in that bedrock. Now, we, we spent millions of dollars doing studies. We've had the Garity and Miller Study, okay? That was the lead one. And then-town engineer Peter Bogosian introduced me to that study. And we've had several, several studies since. And I worked with IEP in the 80s, working through to get everything settled so we could have an aquifer protected. In fact, we have not done as well as we could have because we have had some problems, we have had some spills. But the more that we protect this, the better off we are. And going in there doesn't help us. Right now, you're talking about salt. I don't know how you treat salt in any way coming through a catch basin. Salt is very difficult to get out, and a catch basin is not going to do it. Salt levels are too high right now. Salt levels are too high right now. When we have a lot of snow in a season, our salt levels go up in the water.
Right.
I can't drink it. And I have to buy bottled water. There are many taxpayers like me that have to buy bottled water. Having parking lots with more snow removal, with more plow trucks, more sanding trucks, throwing salt down. You know, if you, if you walk around the town hall after a storm, there's a ton of salt on the ground. Why be bringing that down to that area? And I will just end with one question. And it would be to the Maguire Group?
Oh, you, please go through me.
Oh, through the chair, to the Maguire Group. Has the Maguire Group ever made a recommendation to a municipality that involves something other than new buildings? And if so, when and where?
Yes, to us. To us, this year. They have, they have recommended revamping some of our buildings. So, the answer is yes. Thank you for your comments, Bill.
Thank you. Okay.
Just want to reply to the, to the boring issues. Basically, the borings was to be on the site of the ball field for the, the, sorry, the boring, the piles.
Yep.
Be for the site for the ball field right here. And they're shallow piles, they're not end bearing. They'd be friction piles. So, we would not be going to bedrock. So, nothing would be an issue that was mentioned.
Right. Thank you, sir. Yeah, please, Jimmy.
What year was it, Nancy? Like you kept on asking, Billy, what year was, did you guys, the comment there a second ago, that I answered up you on? What year was it? What day was it?
It was this year.
What year, this year?
2013.
2013? What month? Do you know?
Well, we're accepting the study today, so I, we could use today's date.
Another question. What's more important, Nancy, in this town? Our water supplies or a police station? What's more important?
Our water supply.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comments before we close this out? Mr. Galvin?
I'd like to motion, make a motion to accept the final study as presented by the Maguire Group and move forward with in-house plan development.
Second. With thanks.
Comments? Anyone? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four zero zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll see you at town meeting? Okay. Open forum. Anybody here for open forum? Open forum? Anyone? Okay, great.
Can I ask a quick question? Gentleman at the back, are you here for the board of selectmen meeting or planning board?
Okay. Sorry.
Because the room changed. We just didn't want you-
Yeah, planning board moved down the hall. I just wanted to make sure.
I mean, they're both very exciting. So, we wanted to make sure.
Okay.
And we are both talking about land.
Okay. Why don't we go, Mr. Boynton, to the street opening permit request? Summer Street and Belcher State?
Sure.
Please.
They're here to speak to it, and Maggie's here also.
Hi, I'm Roy Belcher. I'm the executor of the Belcher Estate. My parents lived at Forty Napontet Street for many years. In attempting to settle their estate, there are these three house lots we've been trying to sell since 2005. And we finally have a, an offer and a, a plan that's been pretty much approved, but requires a street opening to connect the sewer. So, unfortunately, we didn't realize this until it's too late. So, we're asking your, to have a variance so that we can complete the sale of these lots and close the estate.
Please.
No question. You're, the, are you aware of the town engineer's recommendation about maintaining the street opening for, through the period that the moratorium would have been in place, which I think is 2016? In other words, if we, if we were to grant this, one of the conditions would be that you would be responsible for that area that has been cut and, and altered through the end of the moratorium period? Is that something that you're aware of?
I'm not aware of that, but that sounds like a responsibility that we would be willing to take on. You're talking about if there were settling, it would have to be redone? I wasn't aware of that, but that sounds like a reasonable request, so I would agree to that.
Because that, to me, that seems to be kind of the linchpin, one of the linchpins of, of this. Because, you know, we're trying very hard to improve our streets. We're diligently, you know, and wisely, I think, spending money on, on these street improvements. And then, we want to make them last. And so, when someone like yourself comes in, we have a little bit of a, at least I have a little bit of a mixed emotion. Because I really don't want to grant these, but on the other hand, there are exceptions to the rule. And the one thing that, that troubles me a little bit is if you're agreeing to be responsible, and I don't know if we've, you know, we don't have that many of these, but I don't know if we've done this before. Do we have them post a bond, Maggie? How do we ensure that responsibility? And if it turns out that it's posting a bond, is that something that, that you'd be willing to do?
Go ahead, please.
Typically, the contractor point that this gentleman would engage to do the work is the one that they post a bond. Typically, the, the street opening permit bond is ten, a $10,000 minimum bond. It goes up if the work is worth more than $10,000. And we would put this as a requirement on the fellow or the, the firm pulling the, the-
Right, but once they complete the work, they want their bond back. We're looking for 2016.
The, your street opening permit rules and regulations require the bond to stay in place for, for one year. That's a standard one year.
Okay.
This, all of these moratorium requests that come through my office now, since we started with, with the gas company starting this year, I'm recommending that the bond be required to be in place for whatever the remainder of the term of the moratorium. That seems only fair.
Very wise, very wise thing.
And it's, it's more incumbent on the, the outfit doing the work, because they're the ones physically doing the work.
But they're going to charge him for it.
Probably.
So, that's why he needs to be aware of it. Okay, so you're going to require the bond to be maintained in place through the end of the moratorium?
That's, that's correct. I mean, ultimately, for the, for the few that we have, it'll mean us keeping track of them. Because typical, most bonds, or not all of them, are good for a year and a continuation certificate comes, comes around. So, we will need to keep track of them in a separate way.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else to add?
No, I have nothing else to add.
Okay. Any other comments?
I'm torn. I mean, I understand it and, you know, it's-
The other problem is it's such a, it's such a traveled street. I mean, there's a ton of traffic on that, so that road, if you cut into that road, it's, it, it's just a shame. But, you know, if we have-
Well, if I may, Mr. T, and I apologize because this is just coming to my mind right now. Maggie, can, question. Is there a way that the utilities can actually go out to Napontet?
Not for this lot, because it doesn't, it's not a corner lot. The adjacent lot to this one that they, I also believe you have, has utilities. They will be coming off Napontet, but this one, they would, they would have to get an easement from the abiding lot.
That's kind of what I was thinking.
Who owns the abiding lot?
Do you have, am I, am I correct? There, there's a lot you're filing for now, and then one, at least one around the corner. Is the property divided into three, I believe?
Correct. I have a plan, if that will help. But yes, to answer your question, two of the lots front on Napontet Street. The third lot fronts on Summer Street.
And you own all three of them?
Yes.
Wow.
Until they convey them out to someone else, but at this point-
But they own all three right now, so they could grant themselves an easement through the property for the sewer lines. So, to me, that's then, put the, put the sewer line over. I mean, you're going to be looking for cuts anyway in the other lot. Put an easement through the property that you own next to it and make it one sewer connection. I'm, my answer is no.
They'll also be connecting, excuse me, they'll also be connecting water for all three lots on whichever, whichever street that it's on.
But it's a no-brainer. You're coming here now, perfect time. You own all three, put the easement through and run it through the other lot so you don't go into Summer Street.
Can we, can we ask that this be tabled for tonight?
Yeah, that would be interesting.
And ask that-
Let me, let me officially ask. Let's table this tonight. Come back in our next meeting, which is-
Two weeks.
Two weeks from now. And come up with a plan that at least evaluates Ms. McKenzie's proposal.
It's done, right, Maggie?
I'm sorry?
It's done?
It can be. It can be. I think what he would probably have to do is get the engineering firm that he's worked with to develop the, his utility plan to do that with him.
But it, but it's a, it's a very interesting option. Let's just take a look at that and then we'll make our decision. Okay?
So, that, just so that everyone's clear, that, that's going to involve, you're going to have to go back to your engineer, discuss whether it's feasible and how an easement could come through the abutting property that you own. And then you're going to come back to us, assuming there's some issue. If you can do it, you don't have to come back, because you won't have to get this additional street opening. But if there is some major hardship or inability to do it, then you, you would come back here. Does that make sense to you?
Yes, it does.
And, okay.
Fair enough.
Yeah. I mean, do that and then we will, and especially if it can be done, I think it addresses our concerns. And if it can't be done, then we'll try to either find another alternative or vote on the merits of what you want to do.
Ms. McKenzie?
You also, to me, it looks like you have more than enough frontage that I would think you could actually cut over more and it could actually stay within your lot. I mean, that's just what it's looking on this. I mean, I know it's not a stamped plan, but they gave us the power.
No, I know, but just-
Maggie, you know what I mean?
You, you, suggesting they change the frontage, the, the lot line to be able to-
No, 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 no.
I'm saying if he doesn't want to do the easement, possibly, yes. Change the frontage and then it could be his own property for that lot. And you wouldn't need an easement.
Then you wouldn't need the easement.
If that's what you're worried about. And it not be necessarily a corner lot. If the frontage could be on Napontet for the other lot. And that way, you could keep your sewer line on your property and head over to Napontet. I think there's a few ways to work this out. That cutting the street should be the last one and not necessarily-
But at the end of the day, if you can't do those things, we'll look at it on the merits of what you want to do now. But if there's a creative way to keep it without cutting, then to Ms. McKenzie's point, let's take a look at it, because cutting is the last option. Okay?
Nancy spent 24 years on the planning board, so this is just, we can't get it out of her, so.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
We'll see you next, at our next meeting. Mr. Administrator, John Robinson Jr., Memorial Day?
Mr. Robinson is here.
Oh, terrific.
As is our veterans' agent, John Cogan. And I believe they have information on a very exciting and very unique Memorial Day.
We will be the judge of that.
Good evening, board. Thanks, thanks for having us here. I just want to give a quick thank you to the members in the town of Walpole. Basically, over the weekend, we had about 60 volunteers come out Saturday and help replace over 1,200 flags on the headstones of the markers of the veterans here at Walpole.
That's awesome.
I mean, if you look at the Walpole Times that came out this week, today, you'll see some of the pictures in there. It was just incredible, the, the amount of support we've gotten out in the last couple of years that's come out during the weekends on their own time, from small children to World War II vets that still come out and, and do this. So, it's just a great thing. And also, a quick shout out to the knitting group from the counseling aging. We, I'm sorry, I don't know, I can't remember her name, who's in charge of the knitting group. But they actually have been making Afghans for Afghanistan. That's what we've kind of called it. And within the next week, we're going to send a bunch of these Afghans over to some of the soldiers over there. And they've also knitted small, little things for the, for the children over there, too. So, to give out to some of the citizens that are over there. So, it's just a great and special thing that, that they've done. This, they took some pictures and I had to wear some of the Afghan supporting staff, so you'll probably see that, too, in the paper. I don't know. But, and then, and then also thank the board members here for establishing this veterans committee. Because since January, we've had, what, meetings, at least twice a month. And just the amount of things that we've accomplished in, in this short amount of time has been unbelievable. So, thank, I want to thank the board members for establishing the committee.
Right.
And, and all the support that you've given to the veterans group. It's been outstanding. I appreciate it.
Afghans for the Afghanistan.
Yeah, like that? Yeah.
And they can do, like, socks for the Iraqis.
I can't take total credit for it. I won't, I won't give out the name, but it's great.
But I'd like to, you already know John Robinson Jr. He's our chairperson for the veterans committee. He's doing outstanding work, too. And he's going to give you kind of a little bit of briefing on what's going to happen here in the next few weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, John, before you begin, I just wanted to say thank you to you and the committee. We established this. As you know and other people know in these towns, we have a number of committees. And some of them are very effective. Others, over time, the interest wanes. But if any indication of the power of this committee and the passion for this committee as it has begun, I think this is something that's going to last a really long time. And it, and it starts with leadership, both from you, John, as, as well as from you, because it has been outstanding to date. So, on behalf of the board, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I just want to say it does please me to come back to the board and to share what we've done and what we do have planned in the near future. And like John said, I do want to thank this board for the vision in reconstructing the veterans committee. We're all very pleased with that. And we were very interested to hit it headlong, like you said. As you know, on January 5th, we'd lost the unofficial face of Walpole's veterans here in the community. So, when we met, I believe, a week after that, we knew right away what our first mission was, and that was to properly honor Rocky Rockwood.
Absolutely.
So, that, I'll touch on that in a second with the memorial plans. I just want to touch on, like John said, a couple of the other things. We had a secondary mission as well, and that was, on our war memorial, on the common, we had a misspelled name of one of, one of the gentlemen that died in Vietnam. His name was Nicholas Canaxis, and it was actually misspelled with a K and not a C. So, we felt it was our job and it was right to get that corrected. And we wanted to have it done for Memorial Day. So, John worked with Mizzola, who did the original work, I believe. And happy to report that as of Monday, that name is now correctly spelled on the memorial.
Job well done.
So, and we will make mention of that on Memorial Day, and it will be there for everyone to see. So, we're very pleased with that as well. John already mentioned the flag replacement, so I won't really touch that. But we were just amazed with, with the outpouring of support there. And I know that some people went to visit the graves on Sunday and were surprised to see it. And I've actually received word from them that they will be there next year to help out, which was really nice. So, to move on to Memorial Day, and that's one of the main reasons why I'm here, because we have some road, not closures, but that and use of the common up there. We're actually very proud of what we have for Memorial Day. very proud of what we have for Memorial Day, knowing that we had to honor Rocky, we had to do something special, so we did have a plaque created, I'm sorry, I don't have a slide of it, but.
It's okay.
It came out really good, and I think everybody's gonna be really pleased with it.
We don't wanna give it away.
Yeah, we don't wanna give it away. So we knew we had to do something special, a person who comes to the meeting, it's not actually on the Veterans Committee, but has been very helpful, John Simeone, who's involved in World War II reenactments, put us in touch with some folks that have military vehicles. So we thought that'd be kinda cool to have a static display and get some tanks, so we went over to Northeast Military Vehicle Restorations in Milford, and we took a look, and they were gracious enough to basically donate the time and the effort to come out, and we're gonna pay for some fuel, and that's about it, but, so there'll be some flags, hopefully a tank, so what's gonna happen is they're all gonna show up at the VFW about 9:15, 9:30, and then about 9:30, we're gonna step off in a convoy, and we're gonna have the Walpole Police Department, and also brush two from the Fire Department, which is an old military vehicle, is gonna lead this convoy of military vehicles down from the VFW, down Robbins Road, down 27, along to Main Street, up Main Street, and I, I think we're actually sure this is the first time that a tank has ever gone on Main Street in Walpole, we're pretty sure that that's the case, and then they will be parked, I believe it's East Street, but it's that section between our two Commons, and there'll be a static display there. We also have a flyover, that's gonna happen. Now, it's not, it's not a jet, it's not a very large, it's a, it's an L-19 Bird Dog, and it's a Korean-era observation aircraft that they use for artillery, but it was still a military aircraft. You really can't see any military flyovers this year because of the sequestration, everything's been shut off, all the air shows are gone, so Walpole's gonna be one, one of the few places where you can see a flyover, and that gentleman, Larry Fisher, who keeps his plane down at Nord Airport, has also donated his time and fuel, so basically, at the end of the ceremony, he'll be loitering out over Gillette Stadium area, and I have a radio that I can talk to him, and we'll hit a certain point in the ceremony, and we'll do a time hack, and he'll head in, and he'll fly over about three hundred feet over the crowd on the Common.
Oh, that is, that, that, job well done.
Really looking forward to that. And one, one of the things that I wanted to take on as Chairman of this committee is I wanted to get the kids more involved. This is history, this is, you know, our veterans, it's very important, so I have been in touch with Patrick Shields and Chairwoman Gallivan, and I'm gonna actually be going to the School Committee meeting next week, and we're gonna get word out to the schools that this is gonna be taking place on Monday, and that all are welcome, 'cause I think, you know, this is interesting history, this is history that the kids can see and touch and feel. I know if I was ten years old, and they said, "Do you wanna go to Memorial Day?", I'd be like, "Okay, maybe", but if they said it's gonna be tanks and a flyover, I'd be like, "Yeah, I wanna go", so I think this is a good way to get the kids.
Outstanding.
Interested in, in our very important history, so.
Yeah, job well done.
And a fire truck.
And a fire truck, aye.
I, I would, yeah, I would tell when you're, when you're at the School Committee, tell them that you've also, you, we're gonna have a stealth bomber flyover.
But they won't see.
No one will ever know.
Right.
But there it is.
Yep, it went fine.
Right. Now, all kidding aside, what a terrific agenda.
Thank you.
Absolutely terrific.
We can't, we couldn't done, we've got some, we've got some great folks on the committee, and we're just really pleased, it's a strong committee.
And thanks to the outside folks recognizing, recognizing the importance of this, recognizing the significance of Rocky and just.
Businesses in the community have really rallied behind this, and they will be, you know, thanked, and we will, as, as the right time, but there's been a definite outpouring for Rocky and for all that this committee does, so.
Great.
Thank you very much.
That's awesome.
Congratulations.
I have one question.
Yes, please.
I just have one comment, thanks for everything you're doing for Memorial Day, and I would encourage you, after Memorial Day, as your committee gets together and comes up with new ideas, we're very open to supporting any new ideas you have for veterans, whether they be old veterans or new veterans, that is, Eric was talking earlier, it's great to see a committee get started, and then accelerate away and have lots of great ideas, so we would encourage you to keep doing that, and we'll be very supportive of, you know, ideas that you bring forward.
Thank you very much, we don't know how we're gonna top this Memorial Day, but we'll, we'll definitely try.
Well, I'd say you're, you're in the running with the Ponce Committee right now.
Right.
You just need logo attire.
Yeah.
We're trying to get.
There we go.
Call Dan Ryan and use his vendor.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion to use the street with a tank on the Trevor tracks?
I'll make a motion to approve the use of the Commons for Memorial Day on May 27th from nine to two, and to block off Elm Street between the Common, and the additional...
And to authorize the military parade involving military vehicles, including a tank.
And a flyover.
And a fire truck.
I'll second that.
I forgot the file.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four zero zero, and you just wanted to say, "Tank", I know it, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank guys, good luck, have fun.
Thank you.
Mr. Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, you have before you the annual town election warrant for June 1st, 2013, request the board to authorize and sign.
We'll approve the annual town election warrant.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four zero zero.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you have requests, the annual request from the Agricultural High School for use of the old Fisher Ball Field on the evening of June 5th, 2013, with a rain date of June 6th, 2013, that is for their graduation night.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Discussion, I just wanted to add the, I'm pleased to see the.
Paperwork.
The paperwork and the insurance, in case anything happens to our field.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four zero zero.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you have requests from the Epiphany Parish, it is their 65th Annual Village Fair, that is to be held on Saturday, June 8th, and Sunday, June 9th, they have a request in regarding the two-day fair for banners, for a road race, and to use Front Street as well as the Common, and would ask the board to approve the request.
So moved?
Second.
All in.
Yep, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four zero zero.
The United Congregational Church, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, has a request for their annual Apple Harvest Fair on Saturday, September 14th, they are requesting permission for the fair, permission to hang a banner advertising the fair here in Walpole Center, and to assist them with traffic flow by making Rhodes Ave a one-way street on the fair date from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four zero zero.
Mr. Chairman, I neglected to note that Ava is pinch hitting tonight for Cindy, Cindy is on some well-deserved days off, so Ava's filling in.
Sabbatical, I heard.
Sabbatical, yeah, it's a training mission.
She's doing the flyover.
You have a request from the Friends of Bird Park, requesting permission to advertise utilizing an A-frame, the following events, the Beatles in concert, I'm sorry, that's a Beatles tribute concert, Ice Cream Social, a concert, and Pumpkins in the Park.
Is the Beatles tribute concert the Beatles or the rock group, the Beatles?
I, yes.
What is up, Ken?
Will you approve the request?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four zero zero.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you have a, a very notable accomplishment and worthy of commendation from the Town of Walpole, it is a 60th wedding anniversary, this June 6th, 2013, for Joy and Jack Shone from McDonald Circle, so would ask the board to recognize them with the attached letter.
That's terrific.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Four zero zero.
Mr. Chairman, you have a, one job description that has been revised, it is the seasonal landscape staff, it used to be a part-time, the way it was worded, created some type of ambiguity for the town, potentially regarding unemployment.
Yeah, I thought the rewrite was well done.
So it is before you, request the board to approve the revised job description.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four zero zero.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, bid contract 2013-22 for cleaning, redevelopment, and chemical treatment of the gravel-packed wells, Rick Mattson has reviewed these, we had three bids received, the lowest responsive bid was DM, was Meyer Services Incorporated of North Reading, it's a lump sum price of $50,800, would request that the board can approve bid contract 2013-22.
So moved?
Actually. Discussion, Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, I don't know, yeah, was there any difference between Meyer Services and Dennis L. Meyer?
Definitely different companies, and I, I don't know the specifics of how the split went, so to speak.
Do they have different addresses, and?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, yeah.
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Anyway, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four zero zero.
Helping our heroes.
A request for a road race, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for June 1st, 2013, a road race, that will be a, they've worked with Joe Zangetti on the route, it'll start at Homeward Lane, through the neighborhoods on Delaney, and Dover, and Paddock, and Buckford, and Sunny Rock, and Heritage, so it'll be in the neighborhoods in North Walpole, would request the board's approval of the request.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, four zero zero. Before we go into executive session this evening, why don't we move directly to the Town Administrator's Report, and I was, before you begin, I was remiss not to say this at the beginning of tonight's meeting, Mr. Berry, Mr. Gallivan, and I, and our Town Administrator, attended the memorial service up at Adams Farm for Ralph Knobel on Saturday, Saturday, right, and it was an absolutely wonderful event, Cliff Snuffer did a great job as Master of Ceremonies, and the speakers all brought out the spirit and the contribution and the dedication of a real hero in our town, and I just wanted to bring it up one more time because Ralph was a total class act, and his contributions to this town will be well-served for generations to come, so, I know you did an outstanding job with your remarks and other aspects of that, and a job well done for everyone.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I have for you a few items tonight, Stephanie has made a request for board's approval for their fourth season of the farmer's market, it's kinda hard to believe that we're into season number four already, the farmer's market will officially open on Friday, June 14th, and they will run Fridays through September 27th, from 1:30 to 6:00 PM on the Town Common, the request is that the board authorize the farmer's market again this year and use of the Town Common as requested.
Do we need to vote that?
Yeah, you should.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four zero zero.
Thank you. Just a couple of items on a follow-up from town meeting, I thought overall, town meeting went very well, I thought it was spirited, there was quite a bit of debate, I think generally, everybody was very well-prepared, obviously, we had, we hit a speed bump along the way on the Walpole Park South issue, and I think that was, it was, for lack of a better description, it was avoidable, but nevertheless, it's also a learning experience, but there are some key important points, there were a lot, I shouldn't say a lot, there were several points of complete misinformation that were thrown out about this, in fact, there was a comment that the Planning Board never approved this, in fact, the Planning Board did approve this in 1985, originally, the Planning Board denied it, there was a situation where a lack of proper filing resulted in a constructive approval, and then ultimately, it ended up through court process, but ultimately, the Planning Board did finally approve a revised plan for Walpole Park South. Now, fast forward almost thirty years, what is before the Town of Walpole for the fall town meeting is a street acceptance, what we will do, and we will do in short order, I just saw Mr. American in the hallway, as a matter of fact, on my way down here tonight, we will sit down with folks from Walpole Park South, our engineering department, and if necessary, town council, and make sure that we have it lined up specifically, as should be done from a proper perspective. Now, I understand the comments from the Sewer and Water Commission, I think that we will involve them in the discussions, because clearly, they have been part of this, and I would like to have all ducks lined up, all issues ironed out, and we will get that squared away, so that we're not gonna wait until the warrant opens, or until, you know, last minute to bring this to you.
Perfect.
It's been referred back to you, and we'll get it going.
Thank you. Nancy?
I just wanted to comment on the fact that the Water and Sewer Commission is requesting after all said plans are done and signed off, that they wanted the pump station to be taken out, and they wanted the sewer line that would be under a public way to be taken out, and to be the responsibility of the owner of the development. I personally think that that is a bad idea, I think that to, you know, although the current owner is somebody who is well-invested in the town, and has been an incredible citizen, but you never know what happens, and you never know who's gonna own that, and if really your charge is protection of the water supply, that I would think that a pump station and a sewer line would be the last thing you'd want in private control, if anything ever happened to either one of those, the town does not have control over the backup or the flooding, or what would be recharged into the, you know.
Valid point.
The water supply, and then, just to show, one that is a private one, we have a letter that addresses.
You're gonna jump the gun, go ahead.
That Gate House, they have their own private pump station, and a pump station which they actually went through the site plan process, not the subdivision process, which would know that it would stay private, anyway, but the town doesn't have control of it, and has had years and years of complaints regarding that pump station, and the odors that it has caused in South Walpole as far as four miles away, and it's a continued, ongoing process that Water and Sewer has had, you know, minimal luck having input on, because it's a private pump station.
Right.
You know, I just, I, I just hope that the Water and Sewer Commission, you know, rethinks what they were throwing in at the end there. Very smelly situation.
Let me, let me just jump on that one quickly, to that point, there have been some complaints regarding continued odor issues downstream in Georgia Drive area, it turned out that the pumps, the system at Gate House had a mechanical problem, failure, we have therefore sent the letter through the Sewer and Water Commission to Gate House folks, and basically telling them that the time is now that they must chemically treat that effluent before it enters our system, so I'm hopeful that they'll work with us, but if not, we are prepared to take legal action to get that compliance.
Great, thank you, Michael.
So just a legal action, that if we owned that pump station, which I'm not saying that we should, but if it was our own pump station, it'd be something we would just fix.
Just that last item on town meeting, we do have to develop security camera policy, we are working on that, and we will bring that forward to you for your consideration as part of the board's policies and procedures.
Terrific.
We're not, at this point, ready to go and start installing, we haven't even put the final bids together yet, we will do it, you know, the correct way and do due diligence.
Yeah, appreciating, appreciate making it a priority and doing the due diligence to do it the right way. Sir?
And just, when developing that policy, I'd ask, at least from my perspective, I'd like to make sure that we're sensitive to people's constitutional rights, you know, I know that we have a job to do in terms of making sure that we're protecting the public and protecting our property here, but, you know, we, we need to be reasonable in the way we limit access to that information.
Understood.
Okay.
Understood, good point. I mentioned it earlier tonight, I won't belabor it, but in your packet is the, it's actually not in your packet.
Your vacation hours?
No, the, the, we are currently attempting to work with the EPA regarding the groundwater treatment building that needs to go onto the westerly side of the Superfund property, it will back up to Clark Ave, not be accessible, per se, through Clark Ave, but would be, but would be certainly right up against that area, the, some of the neighbors are aware of it, because the engineer, working on behalf of the RPs and the EPA, has communicated that, we had not finalized anything at this point, but that was my communication yesterday with Robin and the EPA, that we do need to have a public meeting, we're gonna try to have that within the next two weeks, public outreach meeting followed by a meeting with the EDIC on June 10th, so we will stay on top of that, and one other item, I don't have it in my packet here, but off of McHale Way, a, what is believed to be allowed by zoning, a home for folks with certain types of developmental disabilities, has been requested and permitted, and the, some of the neighbors have retained counsel, and will be going through the Zoning Board of Appeals to review the issuance of that permit, to see what needs to be done, the superintendent's office is also involved, because it does, obviously, abut or border the Bird Middle School area.
Right.
So, we did meet with the proposed owner of the, or the developer of the site, with John Rockwood, in terms of bringing the, the concept to us, and Jack me, several months ago, and it, it seems like, based on their experience in other communities, it is a, it's a wonderful service that they provide for folks with... service that they provide for folks with this type of disability. And I, on the other hand, I think that it's perfectly acceptable that folks would bring this now to the zoning board to get further answers. So it's taking the appropriate and proper process.
Mr. Thompson?
Thank you. Can we get some type of, I mean, obviously, there's got to be an exception to zoning to permit this to be utilized. I mean, you can't have, as I understand it, under single-family zoning, you're probably not allowed to have that many unrelated people living under one roof. So, I mean, my point being this, I'd like to get some type of information from Jack as to, and, you know, maybe he can either come in or just give us some information as to what the, and Nancy, maybe you know this because of being on the planning board, but what the basis for this being a permissible use in a neighborhood. I think, on the one hand, you know, these are services that are needed, but we clearly have
We have many in town. We have several throughout town. It's not something that's new or different.
We have, we have people, homeowners in that area that are upset.
They're asking for the information.
And let's, let's get ourselves educated, so that if someone comes up and asks us, we can let them know.
Sure, we can do that. I will have him put together an email, and we'll get it out to the members of the board.
Great.
We talked about Memorial Day, and yes, we'll be out of the office on a handful of days, including some vacation time.
Great. Any dermatologist appointments?
No, I do have a different medical appointment, but we won't go into that one.
Does it hurt?
Not yet. Tomorrow it will.
Great. Okay. We'll move right to new business, old business. Any new business, old business? Mr. Thompson?
I'm all set.
Oh, wow.
Tonight, I'm
Please, next meeting, have some, okay?
Eric, I'm waiting, waiting until you're on the phone.
That won't happen ever again.
Not tonight. Ms. Galavan?
Nope.
Ms. McKenzie?
No.
Mr. Kraus, no. Okay.
Maybe I said it wrong.
Yes. Can I have a motion to...
Just go ahead. Did everyone see the information that John Carmichael circulated?
Yeah. Oh, the other thing that I thought was really neat that we found out about in the Walpole Times, and maybe it was discussed, and I couldn't hear it over a staticky line, was the expansion of the League School, which I found pretty fascinating, because it's a tremendous school doing some very good work, and it's good to see.
You see, you have one set of minutes.
Excuse me?
You have one set of minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of April 18th, 2013.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero zero. Okay. I'm going to move into an executive session. I declare that under General Law, Chapter 30A, 21-3, "The purpose of the executive session will be discussed strategy with respect to potential litigation. A discussion of the strategy in open session could compromise the purpose for the executive session, and the board shall not return to open session at the conclusion of the executive session." Can I have a motion to enter into executive session?
So moved.
Go have a second.
Second.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Galavan?
Yes.
Ms. McKenzie?
Yes.
Mr. Kraus, yes. Good night, and thank you for coming.